Follow the order. Can you do the roll call or someone do the roll call? Over there. Here.
Hi.
Yeah.
Here Halter.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Township manager, co-director and township engineer also present.
We'll start next. We'll do a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one day nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any members have any comments on the agenda?
No.
No, Donald.
Public comments on the agenda? So we have minutes from the July 25th meeting. We do have a forum of people that were in attendance. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes or any comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes for July 25th, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Minutes are approved. So next up, we have forty six oh five Westchester Pike. Do your presentation. Do you have a microphone over there? And we. Yes, I will.
My name is Don Petrosa. There we go. Don Petrosa, I'm here representing Joyford Newtown Village LP, the owner of approximately fifty-six acres of land at forty-six oh five Westchester Pike in a C2 zoning district. I'm referring to the property along Westchester Pike, which is on the interior of the Loop Road known as Alice Grim Boulevard. It's also the larger tract also has the Veterans Memorial and was approved for a hotel back in two thousand twenty or so and also has a Veterans Hall that was approved. Now, the subject of the current conditional use of land development applications is a proposed logistics center for Boron, a well-known manufacturer and distributor of homeopathic medicines on approximately five point nine acres of the tract. With me this evening are Fabrice Furriolini.
Fabrice.
Who is Vice President of Finance, IT Supply Chain and HR at Boron USA in the Newtown Square facility that's already here. We've got Ed Pereira of NDI, which is the owner's representative on this matter. Rick Stratton, professional engineer, director of engineering at Chester Valley Engineers. Braden Garrison, who's a professional engineer, senior project engineer with Bowman, who is a traffic and transportation engineering firm. And Brian S. Clemmons, who's project manager for DT Groups, which is the project architect. A logistics center is defined in the ordinance as flex space for any combination of three or more of the following uses. Office, receiving, storage, assembly, packaging, delivery, automation and other logistic services. Logistics centers is permitted by conditional use in a lifestyle village, subject to certain requirements. A lifestyle village is an integrated development insisting of any combination of three or more of the uses permitted to be developed on the same track. Except where specifically provided elsewhere, a lifestyle village is intended to be generally pedestrian oriented and to promote a mix of commercial development with community interaction and cultural activities. An applicant for conditional use approval is to comply with the specific objective criteria contained within the ordinance. The planning commission is to consider whether the proposed conditional use complies with the zoning provisions applicable to the districts within which the conditional use will lie and the provisions of the land development and subdivision standards of the township. We have review letters from the township engineer, the arborist, township arborist, township fire marshal and the Delaware County Planning Commission. And which address compliance with the township ordinances. Accordingly, conditional use and land development are sort of intertwined. The conditional use standards say that you must establish that you meet the zoning requirements and that you meet the subdivision of land development required requirements. And that's the exact subject of the review of the land development plan that Pinoni Associates has done. So we propose to proceed on both applications simultaneously as opposed to separately. I'd like to first tell you just a little bit about the proposed use, what it is in actuality. It's a logistics center, but the proposed building is seventy-seven thousand two hundred eighteen square feet total with seventy-five thousand three hundred sixty-eight gross on the first floor and eighteen hundred fifty square feet on a partial second floor, almost like a mezzanine kind of thing. The ordinance allows up to eighty thousand square feet. There will be some office employees. It looks at this point that there probably would be around seven office employees and about another twenty-two or so employees on the floor. We'll talk about what I mean by on the floor. The facility will typically be in operation from seven AM to eight PM, Monday through Friday, with approximately twenty-nine or so employees. There might be a rare occasion where something happens on a special happens on a Saturday or something like that. But generally, it's open one day through Friday for those hours. Deliveries will vary, but during a typical week, we would estimate approximately fifteen box trucks deliveries, which include parcel vehicles like UPS and things like that. And maybe twenty tractor trailers in a typical week. That would average out to about seven truck deliveries for each of the five days. That may be a little high initially, but this is a long-term lease situation. So we have to have, you know, some flexibility there. Most of the tractor trailers in common, not the largest tractor trailers, they tend to be the smaller ones. On rare occasions, maybe a fifty-five foot tractor trailer could come in, but generally they're smaller than that. There will be no truck deliveries or truck idling after eight PM and before seven AM. That's built right into the ordinance. Product will be stored at the facility. Customers don't actually come to the facility. Orders are received either electronically or via telephone. And the orders will be assembled, be taken down from the storage and they'll be assembled and in some case and packaged as well. Some require assembly, some don't, but they would also be packaged and sent out for delivery to customers. And you may know Boron delivers to the Whole Foods, for example, here in Newtown Square, CVS, almost all of the major pharmacies and a lot of all kinds of retail stores. I do want to note that there are special requirements for a lifestyle village containing a logistics center set forth in the ordinance and we believe we comply with these requirements. The minimum gross tract area for a lifestyle village which contains a logistics center is fifty-five acres, at least fifty of which shall be devoted to permitted uses other than a logistics center. So on this particular property, it could only be one logistics center. The others would be, you know, would be more pedestrian friendly types of uses. And we're working on some now. None of them are far enough along to be able to say exactly what they are. But it allows typical, you know, retail uses, community oriented types of uses. It allows recreational uses. We're looking at trying to see if we can get some recreational uses to the property as well. The logistics center site is, must have a minimum of five acres and a maximum of six acres. So it can't be, it can't be too big. I don't want too much of the property eaten up by the logistics center. And this logistics center at seventy-seven thousand plus square feet is really a small logistics center. I mean, there are logistics centers that are four hundred thousand square feet. And it's also proposed initially for use just by Boron, you know, if not a local, an international and local company at the same time. The, the building can't be larger than eighty thousand gross square feet and the maximum building area of a logistics center on the logistics center site is thirty percent and we comply with that as well. The logistics center building shall have a minimum setback of a hundred and fifty feet from Westchester Pike, eighty feet from other street rights of way and a hundred and fifty feet from the property line of single-family detached residence uses and fifty feet from all other property or lease lines and we comply with that. The maximum building height is forty-five feet and there are a few other. Spare with me for just one second. Few other special requirements. The exterior of the logistics center building needs to include some general characteristics of an office building such that a minimum of forty percent of the area of the front facade shall consist of windows and or doors and a minimum of ten percent of the side facades shall consist of windows or doors and we'll comply with that. Manufacturing and refining shall not be permitted at a logistics center. A logistics center need not be generally pedestrian friendly and shall not connect directly to the internal road network of the other portion of the lifestyle village because that's supposed to be walkable and but we are supposed to have a walking path connecting the logistics center to the pedestrian friendly portion of the lifestyle village so that if employees wanted to go someplace to lunch when this property is fully developed, they'd be able to walk. There should be no work done outside of the building other than loading and unloading at the loading docks. Shall be located towards the rear and be screened to an extent reasonably practical. There should be no outside storage of product or material and there should be no truck deliveries, pickups or idling after eight PM or before seven AM. So those are the special conditions or criteria that are applicable to a lifestyle village that contains a logistics center. With that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Rick Stratton of Chester Valley Engineers to review the plans and address the review comments we've received. We also have a rendering of the building that we'll be showing to you as well. So.
Don, before, excuse me, Mr. Petrosa, before you start, aren't you required under the MPC to get conditional use approval first before you proceed?
No, it's very, very typical. In fact, I discussed with the solicitor how he thought we should proceed and he said do it all at one time. Do both at the same time because the, the conditional use standards say that you're supposed to establish that you comply with the subdivision of land development ordinance. So it's, it's done all the time.
Yeah, the Commonwealth Court ruled in two thousand five and I could not find any case in Ray Thompson that conditional use approval is required before you proceed with land development approval.
Yeah, I think I could provide you with some authority that says otherwise. I'd be, and I'd be happy to do that.
Well, it's just that, I mean, conditional use approval really goes to how the property is being used rather than the specificity of the land development.
That's correct.
So as you point out, all the land development issues, they're really not applicable to conditional use.
Well, you're right. I mean, you raise a legitimate point and I think the point is that a lot of times when somebody's coming in for a conditional use, it's just the use. It's only the use. And therefore you don't have to establish all the engineering detail that you would with a land development.
Agreed. So let's, let's take that issue and let's just focus on that for a second. So you're looking to put a warehouse into a lifestyle village?
Yes.
And I recognize that it can be allowed by conditional use if you get conditional use approval. And conditional use approval has to go to the board of supervisors get approved.
Yes.
As opposed to the zoning hearing board.
Correct.
So tell me then why, you know, under the statute for a lifestyle village, there's supposed to be community interaction and cultural activities proposed. How does this single element, because there's nothing else there right now. It's still the prairie. There's nothing else there. How does this building, this warehouse that you want to construct essentially promote the purpose of C2 statute, which is in a lifestyle village, a mix of commercial development with community interaction and cultural activities?
Right.
It's not there.
The, the issue is that you, we would love to have all the tenants come here in one day and sign leases and we could tell you exactly who's going to be in the entire build out. Obviously, we haven't been able to do that. That property would have been developed a long time ago. It's just, it's just not feasible. So the ordinance now specifically says that you can concentrate just on the portion currently being developed. You can do it in phases and that's what we're doing in phases. We have, as I said, we have a hotel approved, which I know it hasn't been built, but it's not total, it's not dead yet. We have a hotel which has been approved and we also, you know, have veterans and veterans hall. And so a lifestyle village is any combination of those three uses. And once the ordinance allows a logistics center in a lifestyle village, that's one of the permitted uses. You just need three.
No, it's not permitted. It's used by conditional use.
No, but it, you're distinguishing between a permitted principal use, a use by white and a conditional use, but a conditional use is a permitted use.
If, if the board approves it.
If the board approves.
And they would approve it with these other presented options for the overall project, which we see none of, and I really got concerned when you said it's not dead yet.
The hotel.
It could be dead. So that's not, not even an option in my mind.
Well, it is an option.
Do you have it?
Is there an overall plan?
Do you have the hotels?
We don't have a hotel right now.
That's my, that's all I'm saying.
Somebody was out looking at the site last week.
I went and looked at it myself.
And no, an operator of hotels. So if we had a lease signed on a hotel, we'd be in on that as well.
Well, I, I think the point that's being made is there's nothing else there.
Well, there's, there's a veterans hall, which is going to have some cultural activities and is going to be open to the public for certain displays that the veterans are going to do there. And that's been approved and that they have groundbreaking.
It's not up. It's not there.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be up. I mean, you.
So, so Mr. Petrosa, what, what our, the planning commission here has to make recommendations to the board of, to the board supervisors that this proposed improvement is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And for this particular zoning district, there's supposed to be an integrated use of the property and you're asking us on behalf of the property owner to trust us. Trust us that it's going to happen at some point in the future. And I think that there's just a little trepidation here that we're showing a lot of trust and we have to recommend to the supervisors and I'm uncomfortable right now recommending, okay, they want to, they want to come in with a, with a warehouse on this prairie and, and.
They'll fill in the rest.
So, so what the, what the ordinance, I'm sorry.
I finished his.
Yeah.
I said, maybe.
What the ordinance says a lifestyle village is, except where specifically provided elsewhere herein, a lifestyle village is intended to be pedestrian oriented. Then when you go to the logistics center, it says a logistics center does not have to be pedestrian friendly, but it just has to have a walking, pale connector.
And that makes sense, doesn't it? Because we don't want a tractor trailer coming there and running over somebody.
Makes perfect sense. That's why, that's why the ordinance says what it says.
And I get that.
Yeah.
But we as a planning commission have to be mindful of what was the purpose of that zoning district. And it was a mixed development that we frankly don't have anything there yet. Now, look, if you had, if you had the retail space or the commercial space or everything else that's allowed here, outdoor garden centers, you know, I think at one point in time, there was some type of auditorium plan there. If something like that was there, this would be so much easier to consider because that's an allow, that would be a permitted use. But here, here you're coming in just with, just with the warehouse as opposed to everything else that was contemplated in that district.
We're not asking to build the warehouse tomorrow, just like the other, they broke ground on the veterans hall, the meeting hall that is going to be used for cultural activities. They've already broken ground on that. That's underway. We don't have to wait until that's completed to come in with another application.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting it. I'm suggesting that if you want a conditional use, which you need to have to build the warehouse, that there'd be something more concrete there. It would be a heck of a lot easier to recommend to the board of supervisors.
I understand that. It would be, we would love that. We would love to have.
So would we. That's why I'm asking.
All these tenants, but we don't. And, and the board recognized that. You've got to start somewhere.
What board recognizes that?
The board of supervisors who passed this ordinance.
With the thought that you'd have other things to ask for conditional.
But they said that we can, we don't have to, we only have to focus on the part that's being developed at the current time and not the, the future of it. There, there was, and somebody asked the question. There was a preliminary plan years ago. It was a preliminary plan approved for the development of the entire site. And it did have some kind of a cultural center in it and it had other things. And it got preliminary plan approval, but we don't, we don't have those tenants and it has been changed already. The veterans memorial and the veterans meeting hall was not part of that. The, the hotel, there was, I think there was a hotel, but it was in a different location. It was a different shape. If you, we could come in with things drawn on a plan that we don't have any leases for. And then you can make fifty changes to it. I don't want to talk about other developments, but I've seen developments in this township where they get something approved and then they're back how many times to make changes to the plan? And when you've done, the plan is almost nothing like what it was that was originally approved. And that, that makes no sense.
But at least you have an idea what is planned for the future. Years ago when.
But it was completely changed. What was.
Is that our problem?
Right now.
Is that our problem?
Right now, we have a warehouse stuck in the middle of nowhere in this field. And we don't know what would be sometime in the future built next to it on one side or the other side. And I don't know. To me, it doesn't make much sense.
Well, it, to the, it follows the ordinance. It's allowed under the ordinance and, and, you know, we're proceeding under the ordinance. I, I wish I had, I could show you what the entire property would, would be. I just can't do, it just doesn't work that way. You just don't get all the tenants at one time.
I see. Go ahead.
I don't equate a similarity between lifestyle and logistics. I don't equate a similarity between lifestyle and tractor trailers or box trucks consistently coming in and out of the property. So that's one point I wanted to make. The second one is you put in, let's say, we make the recommendation because again, that's what we need to do. And it goes forward and you build this, right? And then you have large vehicles, tractor trailers coming in and out of there. How does that impact the marketability to get a hotel then to come in or other retailers to come in when they say, okay, I'm going to have, I need my customers coming in and out of here to shop and walk and there's tractor trailers coming in because the logistics center is already there. So.
Tell you something, there are tractor trailers all over the township today. There are tractor trailers coming into Alice Grim Boulevard today. The post office has tractor trailers coming in almost every day. I looked at a comparison between a supermarket and this and the supermarket has many, many, many more truck deliveries than what this, this will have.
Well, Alice Grim Boulevard is actually closed, right? Isn't it? It has fencing in front of it at that intersection?
Yes.
At the one near Campus.
I realize it goes all the way around, but you can only exit down to the, I guess that would be the westerly point of Westchester Pike. The eastern side of the entrance is.
Is, is closed now. It would be open with this.
One would think, one would hope.
Well, well, the plan is, and this is one of the things we were going to get into. The plan would be to have that the Boron, the tractor trailer would only use the exit, right? The entrance and exit right now from the east, the eastern side where Campus Boulevard is. The rest of it would still be closed off for the, until we get some more tenants.
You said plan, that I could.
I'm sorry.
You said plan.
Plan.
To exit only at Campus Boulevard.
Yeah, because it would, the rest of it, it would be closed off.
How would the vehicles know that? How would, how would the truck vehicles know it? I mean, that entrance is open now on the westerly side.
There's a gate. There's going to be a gate system, which is one of the things Rick is going to.
On across Alice Grim Boulevard?
Across Alice Grim Boulevard. Nobody goes past a certain point in Alice Grim Boulevard right now, even coming in from the westerly entrance and nobody goes in the other entrance at all. So it would be open on the westerly entrance to the point of Boron. And there would be a gate and there would also be a gate closing off the western entrance when you get past everything that's there now. Just, and the reason is, we just don't want yeah, motorcycles, motorbikes, people dumping, you know, we don't, you need more tenants, more activity to protect the property.
So you're confirming that trucks will only go in and out of Campus Boulevard?
That's correct.
So it's not a plan. That's an executed locked in requirement of your project that no trucks will ever go out by the Veterans Memorial?
Well, I don't know ever.
Well, that, I don't like that.
Well, no, I'm asking the question.
Yeah, okay. I'm just letting you know. I don't like that if that's the case.
Yeah, I don't know the answer, but I'm just, I'm asking. Somebody help me out on that. Will they eventually be able to go out the western entrance?
Evans?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So, good evening. Rick Stratton, Chester Valley Engineers. So it's my understanding that when other tenants do come in and start to fill the other spaces, the entirety of Alice Grim will be opened up. Boron will instruct their drivers to enter and exit from the western side only.
That's the Veterans Memorial.
I'm sorry, excuse me, from the eastern side. I don't, yes.
Well, I mean, just based on what you said, Mr. Stratton, will only the, the truck drivers that come to this facility, this warehouse, will they only be Boron drivers? Won't they be taking deliveries from wherever Boron gets his product from? I mean, you don't have control, I would not believe that every driver of a delivery at this location is going to be employed by Boron.
I think they're a manufacturer, aren't they?
That's correct. You're, you're correct.
There are going to be multiple shipping people and, and all due respect, drivers aren't going to know.
Other deliveries.
Delivery route. I mean, that's just, I mean, I'm just being logical.
No, temporary closure, a sign could put up to direct people to use the other entrance.
No, also you said that there will be other tenants who fill in the building later on, right? There will be the, the proposed lease with Boron is for how many years?
Well.
Eventually.
I, I think it's at least a twenty-year lease.
Well, eventually there may be. There may be other tenants.
It's just Boron.
So eventually there may be other tenants will be sold, whatever, right?
When, when I say other tenants, I mean on the property.
No, no, I'm talking about this property.
No, they wouldn't, they, they wouldn't be on the, on the Boron site. They would be on other parts of the, of the Lifestyle Village.
The Boron would, would be there forever, basically.
Well, I mean, hopefully.
Uh, I'm asking, not that.
Shimon, are you saying if they sold the property?
Yes. Well, they would have a lease.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Always something in the lease where they could sublet terminate.
Yeah, uh, that actually, that is less important than, um, something else. You, you, you mentioned that the size of the tractor trailers is not going to be, uh, the largest size. Right now, it is WB sixty-seven, uh, whatever currently the, the la, the larger side, size. And, uh, I assume that that size and in the future possibly larger will be there. I'm looking at the plan. I don't know how easy it will be to maneuver such a, uh, trailer.
WB fifty is the largest truck that we're anticipating here, and that's what it's designed.
Anticipated or restricted?
That's what we've designed for. The, the site will accommodate a WB fifty.
And WB fifty can make the turn in the, the.
Yes.
From all the docks, all six of them?
Yes.
So I guess I look at this and I, you know, like my fellow members, you know, we very well might just have an inconsistency in what we've approved. You know, we, we've placed a conditional use option here that, you know, when you take a step back and you look at what we say in the comprehensive plan and what people would like, it's inconsistent. You know, I, I'm not sure how I would present it any different than that. Um, but it's code right now. I mean, you know, I think we've got to do our work and we'll make a recommendation and the supervisors are going to do what they do. You know, and I, I do have concern about the traffic because if it's coming from Campus Boulevard, it means it's going to be on Bishop Hollow. And if it's on Bishop Hollow, it's probably going through the developments.
It's not coming on Campus Boulevard. Maybe Fabrice could help us out.
Right. I mean, because you were just saying it's coming from Campus Boulevard. So that, you know, that gets sped, you know, right up here.
I don't think I said it was coming from Campus Boulevard.
Good thing.
From that intersection.
Yeah, it's coming from the intersection, probably speaking. Uh, the trucks are going to be coming from Westchester Pike, east or west. They will turn right, uh, if they are going west, they will turn right on Alice Grim, which is the only entrance we can open with at the beginning. Uh, to your question about the traffic, a lot of the trucks are already coming. We already have two locations in Newtown Square. One on campus, at four campus. And we have one right next to Goodwill. A lot of trucks are already coming to both locations. So the net gain, as far as the numbers that Don provided at the beginning of his presentation, the net gain is probably ten to fifteen trucks a week versus what we're getting currently. So it's not a full blown increase. Those trucks are already coming to the township. And they are, to your point, they are using Bishop Hollow today. They are getting to Campus Boulevard. They come back on Bishop Hollow or come back on the, on the Westchester Pike. Does that answer your question?
Oh yeah, it's just a concern, you know, obviously trucks in the neighborhoods, it, it doesn't appeal to anybody. Um, so that, that was my concern, you know, if, where are they typically delivering from? Your, your materials and/or your finished products?
I mean, they could be coming from the airport. They could be coming from Central Pier, Harrisburg.
Right.
They could be coming.
Yeah. So they're just following their GPS, their truck drivers.
I mean, regarding the address, I mean, today we have to guide them through our facility. I mean, we provide a map, we tell them this is the entrance that you go to. This is where you park. This is the signage that you follow. It would be the same thing tomorrow.
And then a separate question. Is this a ground lease? Who's building the building just for?
It is a ground lease, yes.
It's a ground lease?
Yes.
So, well, then you're, then they're tied to it more since they own all the bricks and sticks. Harder to walk away from that than a lease.
Yes. We have been.
This, this ordinance that we're talking about now was recommended for approval by this planning commission. It, it came to the planning commission, planning commission recommended approval, and the board of supervisors acted on.
Completely familiar with it. Just passed May twenty-fourth.
I wasn't on the planning commission that year.
Well, that's, that, that, and somebody else, it's not, why, why you should be planning commission. I, I mean collectively the planning commission.
So Don, I think, Mr. Petros, I think he can understand the concern is conditional use pertains to the use of the property without a doubt. And that's why I'm saying, shouldn't we be dividing conditional use and look at conditional use first and then worry about land development? Because that's what, that's what Commonwealth Court says, and that makes a lot of sense because it deals with use of the property.
I, I could be wrong, but I think you're misreading Thompson. I think the point of Thompson was not that you have to get the conditional use approval first, but that you can get the conditional use approval without getting into all the details of the land development, uh, the nitty gritty. That's what it's normally cited for.
It feels like process wise, the board, planning commission would like to do conditional use first and then the planning. And unless you have an objection to that, that feels like the path forward here?
Well, the, the, what I'm saying is, your ordinance says that in order to get conditional use approval, we have to demonstrate compliance with the subdivision of land development laws. If you don't, if you want us to ignore your ordinance, we, we can ignore your ordinance.
Can, can I make a suggestion? Can, can maybe we can focus on the conditions of the conditional use process and how this application complies with it? And then maybe focus on the actual land development features of what you're proposing. And if you could break it up in both ways, maybe it'd be a little bit easier to digest. I know the main, the, the commission's main concern is the cohesiveness of the project, but I think if you broke it up into smaller bites, it may be a little bit simpler to address each component of the process.
I, I, I appreciate that, Andy, but the issue really comes down to, in this particular zoning district C two, it, it requires that even a logistics center or a warehouse, in, in order for it to be a lifestyle village, there must be a promote, promote a mix of commercial development with community interaction and cultural activities. They, they can make this the Taj Mahal of, of logistic centers. And they're not going to be able to comply with that requirement of the ordinance, the ordinance which has been adopted. I don't think you can come in and say, okay, we want to put in this logistic center, and we don't know what else is going there, or you have no idea what's going there.
The ordinance that you recommended with planning commission, not you specifically, uh, says that we can't, that we can do just that. And we have three different approved uses that are, uh, uses are permitted in a logistics center. The, the fact that we're not finished building them yet, that doesn't really mean anything.
Haven't started.
Yes, they have. They, they, they have broken ground for the, 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 well, the, the Veterans Memorial there. That's one of the permitted uses.
Okay. It is a permitted use.
It is. Yeah. A, a, and the, the Veterans Meeting Hall is, they broke ground on that. A, a, and that's going to have, uh, community interaction.
I went there at five o'clock and I didn't see a shovel in the ground or a piece of equipment there. Um, you know, you may have had the ceremonial.
But, but you're, oh, you're, 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 Mr. Winterholder, you're, you're talking about whether or not these things are actually built. That, that's not the, the standard. We're, we're, we're just, you know, we came in and got approval for a hotel. There wasn't anything else on, on the property and, and we got approvals for a hotel. We got approvals for the Veterans, uh, uh, Meeting Hall and the, uh, uh, Veterans Memorial. And, and now we're trying to get approvals for this.
And consistent with the ordinance, I'm just saying, where is the community interaction, cultural activities that is required to get conditional use?
It, it's not. That, that's one of the uses that is permitted in a lifestyle village. You are not required to, to have that.
You have to comply with the C two statute. You, you, you clearly you have to go and get, you have to get a variance or zoning. There, there's zoning approval that's also required here?
There's conditional use approval and there's land development. That's it.
So you can bypass the entire zoning board?
Yes. There, there's, there's nothing that we go before the zoning here.
Didn't the, didn't the engineers' report indicate that some zoning requirements are necessary?
What you're talking about.
Yeah, we're getting to land development then. I'm trying to avoid that, but.
He, he raised it. Well, whether you call it that you're reviewing the land development or not, we've got to show you the plan. Even for the conditional use, we have to go over the plan. Um, but what he said was there was some building on an area of very steep slope and steep slopes.
Right.
And he said that you would need conditional use and/or, uh, relief from the zoning hearing board on those steep slopes. But he also said, unless we can demonstrate that they were, I'm paraphrasing, but unless we can demonstrate that they were manmade steep slopes and we can demonstrate that they were manmade, they are manmade steep slopes.
Okay.
So we, we don't need zoning. I mean, we have, the engineer hasn't had a chance to review what we have to present, but it would.
Yeah, who do you demonstrate that to?
The township engineer.
Have you done that yet?
No, we haven't done that.
You haven't done it yet?
It just, we got the review letter two days ago.
That's fine. I'm just answering the, the part of the question that you two were having. And you told me you haven't done it yet. That's all.
Because we got the review on Sunday.
Sir, I'm just saying, you didn't do it yet.
No, we haven't done it since Sunday. You're right.
Okay. Well, so you didn't do it?
That's correct.
All right. That's all?
Keller County Planning indicated in their report dated August sixteenth, the proposal does not appear to comply with the use regulations as established under the municipal zoning code.
Because we don't have conditional use approval, which is a very weird way of saying it. They go on to note that we're seeking conditional use approval contemporaneously with the land development.
Yes, you're right.
Right. So can we have, whether you think you're, whether you choose to be reviewing the conditional use aspect of the land development, can we please have Rick Stratt review the plan? It's the same plan for the conditional use that it would be for the land development.
I, I have no issue with that. Tell us your, tell us the plan issues. Okay. Um, I do have a presentation board. It may be hard for everyone in the room to see. So I'm wondering if we can, is there a way to display the plan on the screen in case we need to reference? They're both the same.
Tell, tell, is this the one you want?
Yes, that's a good one to start. Um, okay. So as, as Don mentioned, uh, the lease area here or, or the, the area, the site area for the logistics center is five point nine acres. That's the, uh, the outer, uh, fold line that's shown around the, around the property here. The building footprint itself is, uh, seventy-seven thousand square feet and change. Uh, there are six loading docks in the back. The trucks needing to get to the loading docks will enter the driveway that is, uh, shown on the right side of the building and they will go straight back and they will maneuver themselves in order to back up to the loading dock area. And we've done traffic, uh, truck turning analyses to show that all six loading docks are accessible. And, uh, when a, when a truck is parked at one of those loading docks, emergency access is also, um, uh, accessible to the emergency, uh, fire lane, which is shown, um, on the rear of the building.
And you will provide this information to the township engineer for.
It's shown on the last sheet of the plans, yes. Uh, maybe not the last sheet. The last sheet might be a landscaping and lighting sheet, but there is a traffic turning analysis uh, somewhere with the end of the plan set.
Is there any parking for the trucks?
Yeah.
Yeah. Separate, like they're not at a dock, but they're.
Yeah. All trucks, uh, the larger trucks that are at the loading dock are at the loading dock spaces.
So there's no, so if, if there's six small trucks and a big truck shows up, you know, I'm, I'm, there's no, it doesn't look like there's any parking there. Would that force them on the street or what would happen? I, you know, so it, it looks like you plan to average, you know, seven trucks a day. And, but if they all come at a time.
Operationally, that's something that Boron will have to, to manage, uh, to make sure that there's, there isn't six trucks coming at the same time or, or more than trucks. Yeah.
That's just the gate turn area or is this?
Yes, that's the turning, that's just a turning area. Yep.
How much land would they need to have some parking? I mean, I see a lot of time in industrial buildings, they've got, you know, thirty docks and then there's, you know, strip of area.
This facility just doesn't anticipate that, that kind of slug of traffic.
Um, but, but, you know, I mean, yeah, it's a ground lease, but they could sell it. It could become a different use. You know, we have to take into consideration that there's particular operation may not permanent. So I'm looking at an industrial building that is maybe too customized in terms of just operations. You know, if there was, you know, I'm looking at the parking area where the cars are. If there was some land over there, you could park four trucks, three trucks. You know, it would feel like we're not going to have trucks on the road.
Yeah.
Like, you know, we don't, truckers are going to do what they have to do. I mean, they're going to be problem solvers. And if there's nowhere to go, they're going to be parked on Alice Grim. So, I mean, that's just.
I, I think there is, I mean, I think that's a valid point, but I think that what you can do is parting your condition that you recommend is that one of those conditions would be that a, a truck traffic can't be parked, that they have to manage that beforehand. Like it, it's got to be managed so that it's, there's not truck parking outside of the site. And go into your point of if, if in the future that Boron decided that this was not their location, then I think that you likewise could say that if any other logistics use was going to go at this site, they have to come back in and renew their conditional use for that purpose.
A new tenancy. A new tenancy would require a specific conditional use.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that, that's a good point to your discussion. Thank you. Uh, just a little bit more information about the, the size of the building and the, and the, where it's situated relative to Alice Grim. The front facade of the building is eighty-three and a half feet from the right away line of Alice Grim. Um, the, there are thirty-six, uh, parking spaces for employees, uh, shown in the front. Uh, two, two ADA spaces as well there. Um, there is stormwater, uh, design for, for the entire, uh, logistics center. There's a large, uh, subsurface basin in the back. And there are, uh, two smaller basins proposed in the front underneath the, uh, surface parking in the front. There is a landscaping plan. So if you scrolled, if you scroll, uh, into some of the other sheets in the set, if you scroll ahead about ten pages, maybe twelve sheets, thank you, sheet seventeen. Um, there is a landscaping plan, um, which provides street trees, uh, also trees, um, meeting the requirements for the perimeter of the building, uh, trees required for surface parking and trees, um, required to buffer the side yards. There is a stream in back of the property. And there is a riparian buffer, um, associated with that stream. The code, uh, says the riparian buffer shall be fifty feet, but, uh, may be reduced to twenty-five with supervisor uh, discretion. We are showing forty feet, which was the same buffer provided for the hotel project uh, that was approved five years ago. So we are proposing a forty foot riparian buffer. And, uh, that is needed because of the loading dock area and the, the room that the trucks need to maneuver to back into the loading spaces in the back. So we need forty feet. Um, where fifty feet are required. And again, that's a discretionary decision by the board of supervisors.
Yeah.
Hope I can see that.
On the configuration, the loading dock is facing Westchester Pike?
Yes.
Right? And the, the height of the building or the top, I guess the ground where, tell me about it.
I know where you're going with this. Okay. So if I was to take a cross section and I'm standing on Westchester Pike, looking straight at, at the back of the property, I'm, I'm facing north. I'm standing on Westchester Pike where the elevation is three oh eight above sea level. The low point where that stream is, is elevation two fifty-two.
The sixty feet roughly?
Sixty feet lower than Westchester Pike. The loading dock and the finished floor elevation of the building is two seventy-five. So, um, still, uh, about thirty-five, forty feet lower than Westchester Pike. Uh, topography continues upwards, uh, towards the north, towards the residential area of, uh, Phillips Lane and, and Boot Road, where the elevation of that intersection is three fifty. So, um, you know, the site dips down from Westchester Pike and then starts to slope up. The Boron Logistics Center is there. The Boron Logistics Center is there and then the site continues uh, upward. Or the, the topography continues upward to the intersection of Boot Road and Phillips Lane.
So, so the bottom line is from Westchester Pike, you're not likely to see the building.
You would see.
The rooftop.
We had the same discussion, by the way, uh, remember about the hotel, the issue then was visibility, it was so low.
Yeah, because you wanna see the hotel.
Yeah.
And, and as the rest of the site has developed, you know, some of the other buildings start to go up. And, and then Boron is, is screened by the other development around it.
We'd love to hear about the other buildings, that's what we talked about before, but.
We'd love to tell you about it, but we can't.
Is, is this plan a nonstarter without the forty foot riparian and at the back? It looks like it, just with the turning you've set up for the trucks.
Yes.
I have a question again, even though I looked at the um, Fire Marshal's letter and I didn't see anything about that. But uh, you're showing uh, access of a single uh, fire apparatus to the back, through the, the loading area. And there is no turning area, so there is one fire truck coming in. And that has to reverse in order to get out of there, no other vehicle can enter. Uh, do you think that would be appropriate?
Uh, that's, that's been our experience on other land development plans, that a fire truck, as long as it can back out, that that's an acceptable. Uh, access in and out.
We do have a review from the Fire Marshal, why don't you comment?
Yeah, I didn't see anything about that.
Right.
Yeah, he, he did, uh, the Fire Marshal did not comment on accessibility for a truck. His comments were really centered on water. And we do have a plan that is currently being reviewed by Aqua PA. Uh, the Fire Marshal saw an early version of that plan, but that, the details of how we're getting water from Westchester Pike to this site. Are not shown on this land development plan, our revisions will, will incorporate that. So there's a twelve inch water main that will be extended on Alice Grim Boulevard and adequate domestic service. Which won't be much because there's no processing and uh, fire suppression service will be um, provided to the site. So his, his uh, the Fire Marshal review is really focused on fire hydrants, um, sprinklers and uh, just overall water. You know, water service to the site. There is a, a landscaping and lighting plan, there's a lighting plan, there's uh, fifteen fixtures shown, uh, proposed. Light the interior of the site. There are streetlights on Alice Grim, they're not in operation currently, there's existing streetlights on that Alice Grim Boulevard. Uh, those would be in operation when the facility is uh, is active. Um, one of the comments from the engineer is to show, demonstrate the uh, that the Alice Grim will be adequately lit and we can show that.
So other than the uh, township engineers review letter that uh, you have not been able to address yet. Uh, have you addressed all the comments in the uh, Fire Marshal and the Arborist uh, letters?
No, we were gonna address all those all at once, uh, with one plan revision to address the Pinoni letter. The Fire Marshal letter and uh, the Arborist letter all at once. Um, after this meeting to, to, to garner feedback here. Um, I'd be happy to go through the Pinoni letter, maybe not every single comment, but highlight the ones I thought were uh. Important to discuss tonight if, if anyone feels like.
You have not had the chance to uh, revise your plans accordingly, uh, perhaps we should wait until next time. When you, you will resubmit plans revised according to various review letters and then we may have that uh, conversation.
I do have a general planning question. So. Yeah, if in the end. The supervisors don't agree to the forty foot riparian buffer, you know, you're stuck in a binary situation, you know. Yeah, you have something to do or you don't. And so my question is, is there a way, if this is gonna get approved. That the parcel could be altered, building moved a bit, that would allow compliance with that?
Is that theoretically possible? Yes.
Looks like that if you move the whole building to the east a little bit, you may have more room, right? And thing.
Yeah, I think the property, you know, look, I, like any property owner doing a ground lease deal, he's trying to lease the minimum amount of land necessary to build the. The building and, and that, that's the deal that was.
And we, and we are stuck to the uh, between five and six acres.
Can't go over the six acres, we're five point.
Right, we can't make the lease area infinitely large, we are limited to six acres and we're currently at five point nine. Yeah, but you could slide it over, right? Right, uh, you have nothing else there. Right, but making the site larger.
My first instinct is larger, but if you could configure it away in which you get fifty feet of riparian buffer. That, that's another option, but my, you know, I'm not saying, you can get there some different way. But I, you know, I'm looking at it and, you know, I. It just feels like. You know, there's a lot of arguments, you know, with stormwater and all our issues and. You know, fifty feet, you know, there's gonna be a certain amount of pressure for that politically. But I'm just looking at everyone's time here, that, you know, is there a way to, to not have that be an issue? Now, I, I acknowledge all the other arguments we had in the beginning, but for the plan in front of us. Um, I don't know, just a thought.
Yeah. Yeah, as, as forty foot was approved for the hotel, that's what we went with here, uh, and stormwater. Uh, we are, we are required to make stormwater better than what it is today. So there will be less water in this stream after this project than what is going there today. We will be infiltrating it into the ground as required by your.
Well, riparian buffer is a different issue, so uh, and it is a tricky situation. Uh, you can't just uh, give out as, you know, as candy because uh, there will be other projects that will ask for the same, right?
Do you mind, we'll do some public comment, you know, I think we've kinda gone around or.
We, we're not finished our presentation, if you wanna take some public comment now, we'll come back to our presentation, we can.
Yeah, I think we've touched a lot of issues that there's probably comments out there.
Um. Do, do, Mr. Petros, do you have any other points that you wanna raise that you think are critical at this juncture, realizing that you have?
One of this requirements in the ordinance and some of the things we're going to were requirements in the ordinance. Is that the building is supposed to have the sort of general characteristics of an office building, so it doesn't look like a warehouse. We, we just wanna show you the, the rendering of the building, it was one thing we'd like to do because it's required by the ordinance. And uh, then we have a traffic engineer who, here who could just, he hasn't completed all of his work, but he could, he could.
Why don't you touch on those and then we'll go, we'll hit public comment and then we'll, we'll circle back as necessary.
Good evening, Brian Clemens D two Architects, we are the project architects for the building here. And um, what this exhibit is showing here tonight is an exhibit that we have worked with. Boron to produce and follow uh, all of the requirements uh, kinda set forth. Uh, by the zoning as well as the uh, logistics center uh, in a village. So what's showing here is the glass uh, compliance as well as the heights of the building. And does depict some of the landscaping, now Rick's uh, exhibit here does show, you know, what it would be final, so it's probably gonna look a little bit more. Um, you know, presented uh, and, and final, but to give you the look and feel. Uh, this is what we're proposing uh, along, along the track here.
And that would be viewed from Alice Grim.
Alice Grim, yeah, so right now you're positioning, you're actually facing uh, kind of southwest.
Do you have a depiction from the rear of the property?
I don't have that rendering with us tonight, no.
And how about the height of the wall, we, you know? It, it just, you know, when you look at a plan, everything's shown from the top, you know, I'm looking for scale versus that building.
Yeah. Forty three feet.
Is the building.
Yep, to the top of the parapet, we're, we're keeping it actually below that forty five. Um, now the building does slope and it steps, so the back of the building will be lower. And I know, Rick, you had mentioned uh, that differential between the uh, room three and looking back, that just brings that down uh, even further. Um, and then again, we're depicting what is actually back there, which is quite a bit of landscaping. Uh, that's uh, currently there now, or, or, or buffer that's back there currently, so. Uh, views from uh, three, I don't think you're gonna see a whole lot of building. You might see the tip of the coping on that front, but that's gonna be about it.
And is this no property wall, is that just a minor feature or is that like a real retaining wall?
Are we referring to along the back of the building?
Yeah, where, where the trucks would enter.
Yeah.
So, so behind the building. If, if I may approach the screen, uh, there is a retaining wall uh, back here. Um, so this is macadam, you know, pavement for the, for the trucks to navigate and, and make their turns. And there is a, a retaining wall back here, uh, up, up here, it starts at about three or four feet high. And then increases to its highest height, uh, highest point right here where I think it's sixteen feet high. And then it quickly goes back to zero as the uh, the existing slope kinda catches up with it. So there is a retaining wall back here, but again, this is uh, you know, over fifty feet lower. I'm over forty five feet lower than, than what's at Westchester Pike.
And this will be what, a concrete retaining wall?
Uh, the, the design has not been finalized, uh, it, it could be block, it could be concrete, there, there are many options. And uh, one of the comments from the engineer was to ask for um, some of the information on that wall design, which requires uh, geosynthetics. And to make sure that there's no interference with those geosynthetics and the stormwater back there, we will provide.
Where, where on that frame will be the underground stormwater management?
The underground stormwater management, a little difficult to see here, but there's a gray shaded uh, shape.
You don't have much distance between the, the wall if you, if you uh, want to put an underground grid.
So, right, that will all be, that will all be finalized with the wall design. And if we must, uh, we may uh, pull back part of the stormwater bed here and put it closer to the building. Um, but we're just trying to balance those, those constraints there, the building and the retaining.
And what would be the facade of that wall on both sides? Will it be made, you mentioned uh, blocks, right, perhaps?
Maybe.
Oh, because it needs to look decent also on the downside, on the other side. Would that be uh?
The only person who would see that wall is if you're standing in the stream.
Well, if you are standing at the uh.
There, there's existing vegetation here in the stream as part of the riparian buffer and that vegetation will be maintained. So a person standing here will not see the wall through the vegetation.
Got you, alright.
Yeah.
Just to clarify one point, I think what you said is that your rendering here does not incorporate all of the landscaping that is shown on. Uh, Rick's plan.
Also the snow.
I'm sorry.
Also the snow, it's a little flat.
So, in, in the most optimistic vein, presuming you eventually get. The necessary approvals, when will construction start and when do you believe the building will be completed? I realize you're looking into a crystal ball, but is there an absolute commitment to building this building or is it just gonna be something on the plan?
That's a, uh, end of work, end of work, a brief, what should I say?
Please, please make sure you're talking into your mics so that people at home can listen.
I'm uh, I, I conferred with the client and, and the anticipated start date would be January.
And length of construction?
I don't recall, do you remember?
Both, both in five months.
Both in five months? That's basically.
That's pretty quick.
I'm moving from all time.
Yeah. And you wanna do the traffic and then we'll go to public comment?
Okay, sure.
Uh, my name is Brad Garrison, I'm with Bowman, we are a civil engineering and transportation firm, yeah, out of Exton. Uh, we put together a traffic operations evaluation for the site, uh, basically just rehacking a lot of the operations that we discussed today. In terms of number of trucks, number of employees, hours of operations, delivery hours, those sorts of things. Um, Alice Grim Boulevard is permitted by PennDOT, it's a high volume driveway, you know, it. For the original uh, site that was uh, approved many years ago. Um, so the capacity at the intersection, you know, it's built out for much higher traffic volumes as the Boron facility um, will generate. So we have no uh, issues there and, you know, as you discussed, with the fence being removed and Alice Grim being open. All the traffic will be handled at the uh, Route three and Alice Grim intersection.
What about signalization? Is the signalization already authorized by PennDOT or ingress and egress from Alice Grim Boulevard?
Correct, that is currently permitted.
Is there, is there lights up there now?
Correct, and they are operational, we had one more signals tech go out there this afternoon to confirm that the signal.
Next to the fence, right?
Yeah, yeah, out there with the news guys.
Yes, okay.
Any other questions for me?
So right now, excuse me, so right now you're planning on having one access uh, on Alice Grim Boulevard from Westchester Pike. To the uh, to the site and there will be no further driving uh, on westward, right? Um. So there will be no other emergency exit in case though it is blocked.
There would be emergency access, the, the emergency vehicles and services would have access, both, both ways.
No, say that there was gonna be a fence there that was gonna be put up, some blockage?
Again, again, it's, it's somewhere in time where emergency vehicles can, can get, get through.
If, if the plan could uh, scroll to the cover sheet, the very first sheet of the plan set, I can uh, point on the board where the anticipated. Or where the planned uh, temporary closure would occur. So, so this is the intersection where the vehicles would uh, enter the site and uh, and drive to the Boron facility. And uh, temporary closure of Alice Grim is anticipated, where I'm gonna point with the microphone if you don't mind. Right there. And right, right there, uh, there's currently, uh, it is currently closed at this location. Um, so a segment of Alice Grim would be closed temporarily until other tenants start to fill out the site.
Do we have any uh, public comment?
Maybe before public comment, one question, the, there's, so that you have two warehouses currently in Newtown Square. Boron?
Yes.
Yeah, is any of that being consumed by this project? Is this new, is there any study on that?
So both locations that we are, we will not be doing any um, logistic activities. All the logistic activities will move to that site.
So the traffic patterns would change?
The location of delivery and pickup will change.
So the patterns would change?
Yeah.
Do you anticipate occupying the entire building day one?
Yes, we will be the only tenant there.
I'm gonna ask it a different way, you, you're the only tenant?
Yeah.
But will your product fill the entire building from day one or are you anticipating that? You're gonna lease the entire building, but we're really only going to be utilizing. Twenty percent of it, thirty percent of it, maybe for the first year, two years. And then you're gonna grow to utilize the entire building.
I mean, our plan is to be a worldwide, so we plan for growth. So to answer your question, are all the valid locations be taken out of the gate? Probably not, probably not, I would leave us, if it was to give you a percentage point, I would say. Fifty percent of the warehouse will have products in the location within the warehouse, yeah.
Okay, so let's say hypothetically, that you utilize half of the building.
Yes.
In the first um, three years.
Yeah.
Okay, and then after three years, you grow, great for you, and you grow to utilize. Another. You know, the entire building, what happens then to the amount of trucks coming in and out for deliveries? Relative to what you're proposing right now?
The amount of traffic we projected for is already accounting for using full seventy seven thousand. seventy-seven thousand square feet for the business, meaning that pick back and ship, it's it's accounting for everything. So that's why when there was a conversation about the truck traffic. I think we are planning, this is, I'm giving you the worst case scenario right now. This is, we are planning for growth, but this is what I'm showing to you right now in terms of trucks and number of trucks coming in and out. This is what will happen when we add full capacity, to your point.
Is the building, is the current construction, maybe this is a question for the architect? Is this divisible? Down the road?
We would not, I mean, not by design, but this is not, this is not our way to divide it.
Please use some mic if you're talking.
Right now, the building is designed for one big open uh warehouse storage. Uh, to to devise it up would wouldn't, you 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 could. You could devise it up. But it would require a lot of re line up of the current building to do that. And I don't think that's the intention.
We've got the loading that just, you know, if you put a second tenant next to it, they got no loading.
Yeah, it would not even be marketable.
Yeah, they only have loading.
Yeah. And it's a forty, you know, forty-foot high.
I missed it. Are the other operations running down here? Everybody's moving into this unit itself? See the other two operations?
The operations that we have on Campus Boulevard and the one that we have next Goodwill, those will be moving into that new location. So campus will only uh retain uh operate offices. Uh, people who come to accounting, finance, marketing, those guys will still going over there. Logistics, the logistic place.
We'll go to public comment? Can we uh name an address, please, when you get up there?
Cindy Mahalo, eighty-seven Huntsman Run, EAC, Environmental Advisory Council. Um.
Let me just ask one quick question before you start. Have you met or is this the first interaction you're having with the applicant?
We've had no interaction.
Okay, I mean, sometimes you've had meetings and I just wanted to get a feel for that.
No, good question. Um, the EAC met for our monthly meeting last Thursday, and at that time, we had extensive review of not only the site plans, but the engineer's letter and the um letter from the Delaware County Planning Department as well as the uh traffic study. So we studied this extensively before our meeting, discussed it extensively during our meeting. We have prepared a um plan development review comment letter, which we will be providing to the Board of Supervisors. We were advised that we did not need to provide it to you, so I will give you a preview of some of the key points of this. Um. And I'll take it in the order that the letter follows. Uh, in terms of overall environmental impact and mitigation, um, we would just begin by reiterating some of your comments and sharing your concern that according to Code one seventy-two seventy-seven point one D, the developer shall observe and incorporate all, this is of a lifestyle village, all natural features such as wetlands, woods, streams, and over in order to add to the overall environment of the lifestyle village. And the engineer, the township engineer correctly observes that construction of the facility will extend forty to fifty feet into the existing tree line and towards the creek and wetlands. Um, second point that is made is the about the three uses and the fact that uh it equally concerns us that there doesn't seem to be an integrated coherent plan for this as in our perspective, from the environmental perspective, this might impact things such as storm stormwater management, the flow of water, the flow of wildlife and um lighting, things like that. Thirdly, um, we're thinking about energy and to conserve energy and to reduce carbon emissions, lower air pollution. We recommend that the facility consider using renewable energy such as solar energy and perhaps create a renewable energy microgrid, which would encompass not only this building, but it's our understanding that Boron's facility in Campus Boulevard either has or will soon have solar energy. So we think this is a great opportunity to be forward-looking as befits a premier township that we believe this falls within the um parameters of having a solar grid. And when you think more broadly, being the planning commission, the fact that several properties on Campus Boulevard have been purchased, are pending development, uh that perhaps the current office buildings there will be replaced by residential. And there'll be new construction. This could be a great opportunity to move toward the future and have a renewable microgrid that would take what Boron already has and uh move into the future. Um, we also recognize that Boron is a very sustainably oriented company. They've been a very good uh tenant and supporter of the Green Building uh Council, Green Building um Sustainable Business Council in Newtown Township. And we'd like to share uh that in Edgemont Township, they just approved, I think it was in ninety thousand square foot, a larger facility that will be combined office and industrial space with a Swiss-owned tenant, and it will be triple LEED certified. So we would totally welcome having more buildings in our township that are triple LEED certified through the U.S. Green Building Council. And we also, as an overall recommendation, request that the applicant uh conduct a bill um a wildlife impact study, as this is a wildlife corridor along the streams and the wetlands there. Um, secondly, talking about stormwater mitigation, uh you had been, if you could move to the uh slide that shows the um infiltration basin three, which is underneath the parking area. Um, there was mention of the retaining wall there. And the fact, one of the planning commission members already noted that it's in the back, it's very close to the riparian buffer, and it's very close to the stream. Uh, we're concerned about the depth to which the that infiltration basin would have to go below the parking lot. And at what point will it interact with the water table of the the stream there? That is a concern. Also, uh, the site, if you look at the land on either side, the site to the right or the east is at a higher elevation, and there will be water flowing down that, perhaps across the road into this lot. And does the stormwater management plan uh account for water that could be flowing onto this property? We rec, we ask that the applicant look for ways to reduce the amount of impervious surface and utilize permeable pavement as possible. We recommend that they apply for uh the Nadipti's permit and comply with their recommendations. Um, getting back to stormwater infiltration basin three, we wonder if the applicant uh has considered an alternative best management practice such as um capturing the water on the top the roof at this very large building? Would it be possible, and the Delaware County Planning Department mentioned this, to have a rooftop detention or controlled flow roof drain system? If there are concerns about the adequacy of the underground infiltration basin in the back, that would be a possibility to consider. Now, moving on to um slopes and steep slopes, we did not see in the plan any um statistics on steep slope or slope disturbance. Um, and uh I did some measurement on this and looked um not only at the disturbance of the existing steep slopes, but the creation of more man-made steep slopes. And I would invite the engineer to correct me if I'm wrong. But by my calculations, if you look at the very close parallel lines that start along the top, go along the left and extend to the bottom. According to to my estimation, that uh area extends for five hundred and twenty linear feet and is approximately twenty feet wide. And in that twenty feet uh width, the slope changes about twenty-eight feet. Now, according to my calculations, that is a seventy-one percent slope. So I looked at the steep slope conservation element of our code, and it defines steep slopes as between fifteen to twenty-five percent and very steep as twenty-five or more percent. And yet, this development is proposing slopes of seventy-one percent. Is 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 that correct or am I wrong?
The slopes were proposing on on that section of the building. I believe you're referring to the southwest corner of the building. Uh, those slopes are two and a half to one. So um, you know, two and a half uh rise and and to one run. Um, and and the man-made and then the slopes that are there are man-made. They were man-made uh when this site was filled years ago. So um, the slopes will be vegetated. And uh, as I mentioned, stormwater runoff will improve with the creation of the site to the to the local stream.
Okay, but if you could convert your, the way you expressed it with the way it's expressed in our code, our code expresses it in a percent fifteen to twenty-five and over twenty-five percent. Could you convert what you just said about two and that that rise over run?
Uh, a three to one slope would be thirty-three percent. And uh, two and a half to one, I I don't have my calculator, but it's probably somewhere between uh forty and forty-five percent.
So it's a very steep slope.
It's not seventy, but it's it's a, it is a steep slope, but it will be a man-made steep slope with um planned vegetation. Uh, there will be trees. There will be trees planted there.
Along the bottom, yeah. Yeah.
Along the slope.
Yeah, so they're going to come back, so just to kind of cut to the chase.
Okay.
So you, why don't you make the remarks?
But that is.
That they address all slopes?
Yes.
A- as needed, and then we can have a look at it the next time?
Yeah, how would they be vegetated? How would they be maintained? And even though they're man-made, the rain doesn't know that the rain is still going to run off them and head out. Um, we recommend that the lighting in this development, uh, all the outdoor lighting and the road lighting comply with the Newtown Township two thousand twenty-four Lights Out proclamation, which uh calls for bird-friendly lighting, as this is very uh close to an important bird area as noted in the uh um natural habitat inventory for this area. And um, I'm just scanning this here.
And you'll at minimum comply with the code, whatever the lights are.
Yes, the lighting will will comply with the township code.
So those were some of the highlights that those will be in.
Those will be in the letter that we provide to the Board of Supervisors, and I trust that you will receive a copy of that.
If I uh may ask, if you don't mind providing us with a copy of it too, so that we can see if we can address any of these issues?
Sure.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
Name and address, please?
Well, Alexin four seven two seven Mill Hollow Lane. Good evening. Um, I have a very great admiration for Boron. Boron has been a huge help in our civic uh uh initiatives. For instance, they have uh underwritten uh concerts in the park, not once or twice, but I think three times. They've also underwritten the planting of street trees on two fifty-two North and South, but um, and there was no co, it was just them by themselves and I um, and I'm sure they've done other things, but I I know they've been very active in this sustainable coalition and um, and we're very appreciative of what Boron's done. But I happen to live downstream from Reese's Run. And this is, this building is contemplated to be located within a forty-foot riparian buffer of Reese's Run. Reese's Run, when we have heavy rainfall, completely overflows and flows onto Little Mill Hollow Lane. Mill Hollow Lane is in parallel to the back of Malvern School, if you can picture that. And um when we have a heavy rainfall, which is about once or twice a year, if you're out, you stay out, and if you're in, you stay in because the the lane becomes a river. And we're just inundated with stormwater the way it is. And we don't want to contemplate any addition to stormwater. Um, if, you know, I understand that the original comprehensive plan recommended a hundred-foot riparian buffer. And I heard that tonight that you all talked about a fifty-foot riparian buffer. I would so enjoy if you could think about at least a fifty and perhaps a bit more. And if that means pushing the building sort of further east and up the hill and a little bit further away from the Reese's Run, so be it. I mean, I, you're asking the right questions to my mind because this is a real dangerous. I also take a lot of walks in natural lands. Our bit, our house backs up to natural lands. And when there, we just walked in the rain last week, and I kept looking for riverlets, you know, and where where rainwater would would brush off the mountaintop. I didn't see any rainwater. When it's in the woods, it gets absorbed immediately. It doesn't, it doesn't run off. And um, you know, I appreciate what the words and the and the idea that it's going to be less rainwater with uh uh, you know, uh wall, terracing and all that, but I have not seen it yet in real life. Thank you.
Good evening. I'll be brief. I know you are, will be seeing this next month. I think if you go to page.
Name and address, please, just for the record.
I am the chair of the EAC, and we will make sure that you get a copy of that letter. I think if you go to page eight of your plans, I think the most important information that everyone seems to be missing when we're talking about the need for a repairing buffer. For the applicant previously got a forty-foot repairing buffer back in two thousand nineteen, our stormwater conditions have greatly changed. So to hold yourself to the standard from two thousand and nineteen is really not realistic. We're asking you to think forward. Our neighborhood is impacted by stormwater, so fifty foot is what's required right now. But if you look at our comprehensive plan, it's recommending a hundred foot. Also, if you look up here, that is called the Hundred Year Flood Plan. That is going right through Alice Green Boulevard. That is the area that he's asking you to go from four, from fifty to forty. And we're asking you to go up. And if it's a conditional use, just don't allow it to happen. We will be back next month, and we appreciate everything you do. And we ask you to really take the time to read our land development review because we have gone into so much information. Boron is an incredible company. They are a sustainable company. They practice what they preach. I am delighted that they are the applicant for this particular building. However, because it is a building in our township, everyone has to follow the rules and the codes. And in this thing, Claude asking for conditions that we just can't accept. We hope you come back with better improved plans, move your property up, and make us all live in peace.
Thank you.
Hi, Steve Hamilton, once Phillips Lane. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. You could see on this rendering right here. I'm at right at the corner of Phillips and Booth. In the wintertime, when the foliage is off the trees, we can see right through to Westchester Pike, and I think based on some of the elevation changes I heard, um, I don't think it'll be an issue. I just had a question about the the height of the lights. Are there going to be lights on the on the exterior of the building or or that extent up?
Our site lighting, uh, the light poles are twenty feet. Uh, as far as the building lighting?
Building lighting will have buffers. There will be no upward. It will be very focused onto the court, correct? And we might have a few bollards located at the entrance for safety.
Okay. Any, as far as the mechanicals go, I think um mechanicals are going to be rooftop?
That's undetermined at this point. We're going to try to look at options to uh reduce that visibility uh if we do decide to do that, but that is undetermined at this time.
Okay. And and last question, um, along that, you know, on top of that slope, along that that wall there, I think there's a road that's being put in there now. Is there going to be trees or something planted there? Any any more foliage or anything that's going to kind of block that view from the residences that are on the backside there? Facing or looking. From the residences that are on the backside there facing or looking toward Westchester Pike?
There is the existing vegetation on the south side of the uh proposed building, it's existing vegetation there. And uh new plantings will be on the side and along the front of the building, so um. The building will be enveloped by by trees, whether they be new trees or existing trees.
Got it, okay. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Debbie Warden and I live at forty seven twenty three Mill Hollow Lane. I am Paul's neighbor. And I do have photos of his, of our driveway. It does, that is not, that is not a creek, that is our driveway, that's right in front of Paul's house, actually. So we're not kidding when we talk about uh the impact that the stormwater has, and that's Paul's house. With with the creek kind of all around it. Yeah, so uh when it comes to stormwater, uh it's certainly an issue. But I also wanted to say one more thing, I was here on April twenty fifth. Um, we were here for the fourteen Phillips Lane um conversation. Um, and I really not come to too many meetings, so, but we wanted to kind of see what was going on with fourteen Phillips Lane. And I noticed, or my friend told me that there was something else on the agenda. Towards the end of the evening, this is the planning commission. And it was very um quickly written on the agenda, and this is what it said. Um, here, it said. Discussion and possible recommendation for approval of the zoning modifications to the C two district ordinance. So it had to do with this project. And I, so I stayed, I I said, okay, I'm interested to find out what that was about. It was probably an eight minute conversation, I did tape it, so I had it, so I could listen to it again, even though they do have it on the video. Um, guess I wanted to know kind of what what was going on. And quickly, I think the same people that are here did hear that there was a possibility of a logistics center, which horrified me. On first glance, but it didn't seem to really horrify too many other people. And it got, I think it got approved, and whether whether in terms of the language ordinance switching. So I started to pay a little attention to that, because I thought, what are logistics centers in the first place? And I thought Amazon, and I'm thinking airport and places that you need a lot of um access with big trucks. But then, when I was continuing to look into it, I heard that it was Boron, Boron. And I stopped worrying and caring so much about what it was. Because I, like Paul, I trust Boron a lot in terms of their. Uh who they are in our, in our community, and I didn't want to do anything that would jeopardize this project. But my point really is, if you go back to April twenty fifth. And you look at the paperwork around it, there's a lot of changes in the ordinance. And who, I don't think anyone would expect that a logistics center would have that much to do with. A lifestyle village in the way that it was first projected to be. So the, I think the planning commission and even the board of supervisors already said yes to the fact that. We are allowing a logistics center in an environment that we had thought was gonna be people friendly, so it's already been determined that that's okay. That's just what I wanted to say, because we can't really, that's just my two cents, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Yeah, good evening, Nathan Glazer, thirty five thirty eight Kaylee Road. Um, the key point I want to make is that I I think, uh first of all, I think the. Ta- the township made an error in even creating this usage within the C two, but they did it, it's a complete. Which then leads to the issue, and I, and this is where I think is really, to be blunt, is a patent absurdity. It doesn't matter what comes first, it's an allowed usage, conditionally allowed usage. So the fact that the warehouse logistics center is going to be the first thing coming in versus anything else. Is simply random function that they're here first, it's permitted. I don't think the fact that other things haven't been built yet is relevant to the discussion, it's a distraction. The issue is, is it permitted and is it compliant? If those two statements are met. Then I think it, there's an intrinsic obligation to let it go forward. Obviously, there are people who think highly of the company and its behavior and and that's laudable, but to me, that's really a secondary issue. The issue is, you know, can it be there lawfully? And from that standpoint, everything I've heard says, yes, it can. And I think spending this other time is is churning the water unnecessarily, to use a metaphor that's popular tonight, water. Um, and it it should be going through as long as it's compliant with the requirements. The order of operations, whether it's the first usage here or the later usage, you know, makes no sense. Quite honestly, I don't see how a warehouse is ever part of a cultural element. I think the connection of those terms i- i- it is preposterous, but that's how it was written. Uh, so I would simply say, let it proceed forward if it meets the requirements. And if it seems to do so, then that should not really be an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go back uh. To the panel.
Uh, Mr. Glazer, i- if I may, um it's not one and the same, a permitted use is not the same as a conditional use. Permitted means it's allowed if it complies, conditional means it must meet certain reviews, so this.
Which is why I said that if it meets the conditions, I said if it be, if it's lawful.
But Nate, Nate, if you're gonna, if you're gonna continue talking, I ask you to go back to.
Back to the podium, please. Yeah, it's okay.
Usually my volume carries with or without. Uh, I'm simply making the point, if it is a wa, if it meets the lawful conditions. Now, you can split the hair, I'm simply saying. If it meets the conditions to be whatever the applicant is requesting. Be a conditional use, be a permitted use, but if it's meeting that. Then I'm saying it should go forward. I'm not saying it should go forward if it doesn't meet. Now, if to be conditional use, you have to do A, B, C, and D, and it does those things. Then I think that answers the question, if it doesn't do those things that are required, then it probably shouldn't go forward. So I I I think we're really getting into a semantic argument, not not one of any substance. I'm saying, does it meet the conditions? Which, if it meets the conditions, to me, that's a permitted thing.
We're we're actually getting into a legal argument, now I I certainly respect what you are saying. I I just want you to know that permitted use and conditional use are two different terms in both planning and zoning.
I I heard they are both forms of permitted uses, there's no question about it, a conditional use is a permitted use.
And at the end.
As long as you meet the condition.
That's right, yeah.
I I I benefit from never having been hurt by a legal education, just using rhetoric as it is. I think my meaning is communicated.
Right, yes, yes, we understand, Nate, thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Anymore, I. It feels like, and I'll open it to you if you want to disagree and or members, that we've sort of. Eat on this. And, you know, maybe we should. See you again, I mean, I'm not cutting you off, it just feels like it's not helping. Um, I would make one comment, and I and I apologize for this, I'll open to anyone else, it's not breaking my rule. Um, where's the hotel, assuming it gets built in relation to this?
Of course, if you pan up, if you pan up on this plan here, I can show you. I'm sorry, pan down. Uh, the hotel was contemplated right in the center of the core area.
So here's my, I remember, I believe there was a retaining wall at the rear of that. With with a forty foot riparian, you're gonna put another retaining wall, presumably at forty on this side? If that, that water's gonna go somewhere. If it wants fifty feet and you're limiting it on two sides at forty. It's either gonna back up on one side or, you know, you're gonna change the water flow.
The stream does branch off into two legs. So there is more than eighty feet between the walls because we're talking about two branches of the stream.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a wide flow area, then even if it divides, still uh during a. Strong storm, it may be even united, and you're restricting on both sides. Which may not be such a great idea, if you can provide um more um. Uh buffer area, ma- buffer width would be advisable.
Thank you.
I'm not cutting you off, I just, I'm I give it, I put a thought out there.
I think we flushed out a lot of issues tonight, I think we're gonna have to come back anyhow, uh so I'm I'm content to uh. Forward and night if you are.
Your your intention is to address the engineer's comments that you received on Sunday and uh. Any other comments that are outstanding, including some of the notations of the county planning commission.
I don't want you to get his comments on Sunday, I got the county's comments on Saturday, people work the weekends on this. I was, but I didn't know they were.
So, I, is there anything else from the planning commission to help you out? Is there anything else that you want them looking at that we have not talked about tonight?
If if that question's directed to me.
It's directed to the entire board, it's not specific.
I I just believe that there needs to be, or at least I would hope that there needs to be a focus that. At the conditional use, it it's so much easier to sell, okay, it's it's allowed there, I get it.
Right.
It's allowed there if everything else is there, or at least there's some concepts of what is there, and frankly. There's nothing there right now, and and I get it that you got this piecemeal approved and that piecemeal approved. And the building looks beautiful, and the building probably won't be seen, and Boron is love, I get all of that, but the issue is the use.
Well, Paul, the issue was the timing, we, you know, we've had other tenants in other places, e- even in the township. Where they were ready to go and they were great tenants, township would love them. But the the process takes so long that, you know, we can't wait till we get six tenants and come in, we won't have the first five. I'm I'm just being honest.
But this is a lifestyle village district and I just want to comply with the lifestyle. Condition, y- y- you would be able to get your permitted use.
We we are constrained to develop the rest as a pedestrian friendly lifestyle village. If we don't do that, it stays vacant, but we have no choice but to 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 build a lifestyle village.
But, okay, I hear you. I I I just, seems like the cart's before the horse, that's all.
You you gotta put whatever horse you got.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
So, and then we'll have Porsche back. In September. And do we have a motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of closing?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Talk too much.
Hmm?
Talk too much. I actually came here to like, it was supposed to be a self-spirated.